Good afternoon, everyone. I am so glad to be here this afternoon virtually with each of you. I'm here with my co-presenter, Dr. Powell. And we're going to be walking through the return to school plan to the community, to the staff, to the students. I want to thank you for your unwavering support during this time, but in particular, allowing the team to really sift through all the survey results. Also, giving us the opportunity to also review up what other districts are doing so that we can come up with the best and most informative plan for the students here in Orange Township. What I will say is this, I know that at the curriculum committee meeting on July 28th, we did present Plan A and Plan B. And of course, we're going to go through those plans again with the full community. I think it's important that everybody's reminded of what those particular plans look like. We're then going to talk about the health and safety components and what is happening in our district. I think that's important that you are aware of what the facilities management piece looks like. And then finally, we're going to, I'm going to share with you my recommendation that I'm going to make to the Board of Education as relates to the plan for tomorrow evening. This is going to be a little lengthy, so I apologize that it's going to be lengthy. But I think knowledge is power, and I think it's important that you have the opportunity to kind of look at what's going on within the confines of the plan. In addition, if you have any questions to out the program, please email us at reopeningofschools, one word, at oranges.k12 nj.us. What's really important is that for those who have been emailing us, we're getting back to you very quickly. I do have about three in my queue that I have to respond to, but I will get back to those as soon as this meeting is over. But just know that once an email comes in, we try very quickly to get the information right back to our community as well as our teaching staff. With that being said, the opening, the Orange Public Schools School Reopening Guidelines 2020 until 2021. And as shared at the curriculum committee meeting, we're going to look at redesigning, restoring, and restructuring. Again, we know that we're in a new normal as relates to this work. And through this new normal, we have discovered a lot of things as relates to professional development virtually. But also, we have also delved a little more deeply into what education looks like, but not in a brick and mortar situation. But again, we all want to get back to brick and mortar, so that's what this presentation is all about this afternoon. Just sharing with you very quickly is the Orange Township Board of Education, members from our President, Mr. Tarver, our Vice President, Ms. Daughtry, our Board members, Ms. Cabito, Ms. Gravesandy, Mr. Henry, Mrs. Johnson, Ms. Mateo, Mrs. Sharif, and Mr. Wingfield. Underneath the Board of Education, always will be the Superintendent of Schools, followed by the Business Administrator, as well as the Executive Director of Human Resources, followed by our Directors, which is part of our executive team, and finally, our Building Principals. Moving down as well, Assistant Principals, as well as Supervisors, which I think is very, very critical as it relates to what we're doing as a district. So you know exactly who was in the administrative roles in our great school district. I just have to scroll down. What's very important, as you can see on the screen, is the table of contents. So from, and I went a little bit further because I hit it. Of course, you will always see a message from the Superintendent of Schools, followed by the plans, Plan A and Plan B. And we're going to spend the majority of our conversation on the plans, which is A and B. And then we're going to move into the schedule. It's going to kind of move around what that looks like. Also, I just want you to put a pin in this, which is really important. The survey about opting out of the hybrid approach, but opting into full remote as per Governor Murphy's order. We are going to be placing that information on the website as well as on our social media handles this afternoon. So just so everybody's aware, if families want to opt out and want full remote for school year 2021, there's going to be a Google form that is coming out today as promised, where you'll be able to register your children as such. Just keep in mind that each child must be registered on their own link because again, we have to make sure that we're capturing all of the data properly. So as you look at the table of contents, you will see the research. You'll see reentry responsiveness and supporting transitions for students, determining probable learning loss, health and safety, nurse's office. The Plan A accelerated reentry, Plan B decelerated entry, scheduling, instruction in classes, preschool programming, special education, staffing. As well as considerations, I'm sorry, I'm just going to have to move down. Communications, I'm sorry, training, contingency plan, transportation, childcare and extensions, FAQs. Now, I know you remember about those FAQs that were created based on our conversations on July 9th, July 15th, and July 16th. Every single one of the questions that were captured have been answered, and they are within the plan. So when the, based on my recommendation, the Board of Education, if approved tomorrow night, as soon as it is completed, I'm going to place this plan onto the website by way of Ms. Perkins. And then from that vein, you'll be able to see all those FAQs that we've answered for each of you. Now, I just want to keep in mind, there are new orders that have come out. So what's important is that if some things have changed, we will update them accordingly. So it's important that you understand that there are things that have come out, and they continuously come out, it's ever evolving, the plan is ever evolving. So when things change, we will update you accordingly. Parent and staff survey results are also evident in the plan. And we also have some draft policies that are in the plan. We do have to enter into our policy committee meeting, so they have to be approved by the Board of Education. So just keep in mind that always policies approved as well as this plan by our Board of Education members. We will also have our appendices looking at state regulations. And finally, we're going to be looking at self-care and resilience resources. I did miss a few items in the tops. I just want to go back. I just want you to be able to look at very quickly what some of the appendancy policy pieces look like. From remote learning policies all the way to staffing. And these are some appendancy pieces that have to be evident, but the board members have to review and have to agree upon the language. And so when we have committee, a meeting, we will then delve into these. But again, we wanted to make sure that when submitted to the state that we did have the drafts in there in the plan. As you can see, we do have evident on this particular screen. Everybody has a mask, and I think it's important that as we begin, the importance of safety. And safety is always first for the board members and myself as well as the staff. And I know my, the families feel the exact same. They want to make sure that, because they're entrusting us with their children, that we're going to put safety first. Always as you, as you know, we create a message from the Office of the Superintendent. And again, the language is aligned to restoring, restructuring, and redesigning education as we know it. Again, I want to thank all the stakeholders who have been a part of the roundtable conversations, those particularly on July 9th, the 15th, and the 16th. But in addition to our family members, our staff members, who are part of the conversations via our survey results. I mean, I know I asked a lot of the community, either being the staff or the families, the board members, but I want to thank you because everything that you have given us speaks throughout this plan. Your voices are all evident. So again, and I did estimate this in a letter to all of you prior, I just want to share and reshare this with you. The reopening of schools committees looked into the, those roundtable meetings that we had, we looked into seven facets from social emotional learning. And everyone knows here in Orange Township how this superintendent feels about self-care. And it's so important that self-care is in the forefront of our mission and vision here in Orange Township because our academics will excel if our social emotional learning is intact. Curriculum programming, health and safety, technology, funding, athletics, co-curricular, as well as before and after school programs, facilities and operations. We also asked questions in the survey about some of these other critical areas that I'm going to share at this time. The successes of the first round of distance learning. And I want to thank you for all being transparent with us so that we knew exactly what we had to improve and the things that we did very well. So it's important that holistically, we were able to reflect on the responses, some of which you will see today. The areas of improvement of distance learning, operations and facilities, the need for instructional support, the split academic day for pre-kindergarten through grade 12. But again, it is important that you know we're going to continue to give you updates via our social media handles as well as our district website. It is critical that you are in the loop as we are making sound decisions for our students here in Orange Township. So this piece is really important, and I'm sorry, I'm going very quickly. That was, it's just the mouse is going a little fast. I want to read this to you. "The following pages describe in details the district's plan for the reopening of schools. While the plan is sound in its consideration of health and safety of staff and students upon based on current research, guidance from the state and the Center for Disease Control and other valuable inputs, the district reserves the right to amend the plan as updates are provided." Again, as I estimated with all the other plans from March through June 24th, 2020, there were revisions that were made, and we did update the community as well. So we're going to continue to do that throughout the course of this new normal. Just know that, and I'm sorry that I send, had Ms. Perkins send so many blasts out, but I want you to be in the loop as relates to what we're doing as a school district. Plan A, and I know we went through this at the curriculum committee meeting, but I feel, the Board of Education members feel, the staff feels, I know the families feel, that we need to go over it again. So the first one is the accelerated reentry plan. This is Plan A, full remote, which looks at providing 100% online instruction taught by Orange teachers. Hybrid Phase 1, which is 100% virtual. Phase 2, which is a soft launch, and I will get into that in just a few minutes. Phase 3 is staggered reentry. Phase 4 is full reentry. And always understand that full reentry would mean as outlined by guidelines by the NJDOE, always getting guidance from our governor, who is giving us guidance on a weekly basis, which helps us to create these plans. Full remote. I know we are very used to the full remote piece. Within this model, students engage in virtual instruction as guided by their certificated staff member. And what this looks like, students from home, logging into weekly synchronous lessons led by their teachers, routinely checking appropriate Google classrooms and emails for information on courses, assignments, and other resources on a daily basis. Attend and participate in any check-in times offered by their teachers. If you remember, we did a lot of office hours through, beginning in March, actually, March 17th through June 24th. And so those were more smaller intimate conversations with certificated staff members. Engaging in the virtual platforms with academic honesty, integrity, and according to the district's acceptable use policy. Submitting all assignments in accordance with provided protocols, timelines, and/or due dates. Hybrid for the accelerated return to school. September 8th through September 18th, two weeks, all teaching and learning will be done virtually. Phase 2, soft launch. September 21st through October 2nd, which is three weeks, for all pre-identified students, students with disabilities, English language learners, and tier-three students, et cetera. But who are the tier-three students, you may ask? The tier-three students are those students who we've identified, and not just the Office Superintendent, but the school-level faculty are identified as those who have not been on distance learning from March 17th through June 24th. But also keep in mind those students who were on a little bit, then went off and on a little bit because we know we have to put our hands on them. We have to get them back so that we can give them instructional supports for them to be successful. Phase 3, staggered reentry. October 5th through October 16th, and this will take place for a two-week period. Selected students onsite with staggered schedules. In just about 15 minutes, we're going to also show you what the draft schedule will look like, district draft schedule will look like. Phase 4, full reentry. October 19th through June 2021, remainder of the school year. All students onsite with staggered schedules. That does not mean that we're going to have full capacity in our buildings. It means that we're going to have staggered schedules by day, and we're going to show that to you in just a few minutes. But I want to, I want you to kind of look at for just a moment. I'm sorry, it skipped. The gray section, and the gray section reads, "The most important impact we can have on our students and staff during the pandemic is on their health, safety, and well-being. Protocols and guidelines have been put in place to ensure that the health and safety of the district's students and staff." Throughout the presentation, you will hear that echoed. But in addition, when we get to what has the district purchased to ensure the health and safety, and Mr. James comes on and speaks about those entities in about 30 or 40 minutes, you'll understand what we have purchased and what that's going to look like for our students here in Orange Township. As you know, every good superintendent has a co-presenter. And my co-presenter this afternoon is Dr. Powell, Director of Mathematics and Science. She's going to walk through Plan B of the plan, which is called the decelerated reentry. I'm going to mute. No. And we're going to begin with looking at the full remote or the hybrid, Dr. Powell.
Okay, again, good afternoon, everyone. In looking at Plan B, we're going to draw some parallels to Plan A as well so you can see the distinction between the two plans. Plan B is named the decelerated reentry model. Within this plan, we're looking at slowing down some of those timelines that you saw in Plan A. All right, so we're going to go through Plan B. Parents still have the opportunity to select between either full remote learning or hybrid. Again, in full remote learning, your children are offsite in their homes for 100% of the online instruction. They're still getting quality of instruction given by their Orange school teachers. That's, that's the first option. The second option deals with the hybrid. That's where your child is onsite part of the time, actually in the physical building. And then, and then sometimes they are within the remote environment, learning at home.
Thank you. All right, so we just had to adjust quickly. Okay.
To our community on Facebook Live, we saw that you could not hear, so we're ramping up the volume. Just let us know if you can certainly hear Dr. Powell at this time, Dr. Powell.
Okay, all righty. So, so just to reiterate again, this is the decelerated plan that again slows down entry back into the brick and mortar space. In the full remote, remote environment, that's where parents have the option to have their child learn at home in an online setting for the duration of the year. Again, that instruction is provided by our teaching staff, and it's a quality instructional model, but it allows the students to stay home and get their, the full complement of their, of their education. Hybrid is the second option. That's where part of the time the students are onsite in school, and the other aspects of the time they are at home in virtual spaces. And we'll go more into what that looks like when we get into the schedule. In this case, we're looking at the similar process of full remote where the students are at home. They're logging in weekly. I want to emphasize the synchronous learning model, which wasn't the, the primary model for the plan that we executed from March through June. This go-around, we're looking at a lot more synchronous instruction. And that's where the teacher is actually teaching live lessons through the duration of those periods of time. So that's a lot more direct interaction with the teacher and the students. The students are still expected to routinely check their Google Classroom accounts as well as their other sources for assignments. The students are also participating in check-in times. The virtual platforms, we're looking for students to maintain their integrity and honesty, of course. And students are still submitting assignments and also getting their attendance taken through those means. In the hybrid model for Plan B, this differs slightly from Plan A, and I'll draw out those distinctions. So in Phase 1, 100% of the learning is still virtual, right? And that will run September 8th through October 2nd. Whereas in Plan A, it was a short amount of time for virtual. In Plan B, it runs for four weeks. So four weeks of virtual instruction, all the teachers are doing the learn, the teaching and the learning through virtual means. Okay, when we look at Phase 2, that's called remote synchronous, and this is the real distinction between Plan A and Plan B. In remote synchronous, this runs from October 5th through November 25th, which is approximately seven weeks. This is where the students are still at home, getting their instruction virtually. But we bring our teachers onsite, and the teachers are providing virtual instruction onsite to those students. The teachers have greater access to their teaching resources, and they're able to still support the students through, through a virtual environment. In this case, we'll have a camera trained on the teacher. The teacher will have access to, like I said, all their instructional supports. The students are able to ask questions. The teacher is still engaging in synchronous instruction. So we look at the strength of that being that the teachers are, again, with direct access to their instructional materials while the students are still able to be in the safety of their own home. So if you look at Plan B in terms of Phases 1 and 2, we're looking at roughly 11 weeks of instruction where the students are still within the safety of their homes between Phases 1 and 2. Phase 3 begins the reentry of students. We were very deliberate in terms of how we are supporting our students who are in need of greater services and support. So at this point in Phase 3, we're reintroducing to the traditional setting students who we pre-identify. Those include select students with disabilities, some of our L students, our bilingual populations, our tier-three learners, those are students who need additional academic supports, as well as the, the students who weren't as engaged in remote instruction as we would have liked for them to have been throughout March through June. So those students get priority. We're looking at November 30th through December 23rd, that runs right into our holiday break, and that's about three and a half weeks. Finally, in Phase 4, we're looking at full reentry. What does that look like? That's where all of our students, the ones who have all opted to return to a hybrid model, all of those students between January 4th through to the end of the year, they're coming into the school building on staggered schedules. For our kindergarten students, they're onsite, and preschool students, they're onsite with us two days out of the week. And then all of our other students are with us for one day per week. The rest of their instruction is virtual, but at the same time, they're getting a quality virtual instructional experience through synchronous instruction. We're going to get to the schedule shortly. Once we go to the schedule, we'll go into what this actually looks like in terms of the, the models within the schedule.
This is the schedule.
Okay.
We're going to, we're going to go right to the schedule. Before we do that, so there are two options for families. You have 100% you have 100% remote learning, and then you have or a hybrid approach. In addition, you have 25% of students in a building on any given day. No more than two days per week on onsite for teaching staff and students. In addition, to provide the continued health and safety of students and staff, we have a 10 to 1 ratio of students to teachers in a classroom. To continue, six feet of space between student desks. And within the presentation, you will certainly see what that design looks like. One of our school level, one of our school level administrators, they began doing this work about three weeks ago and sent me some pictures of what that looked like. And we incorporated what the standard socialization type distancing would look like in that particular building. So we'll share that with you. In addition, grades 1 through 12, no more than four hours of instruction per day onsite. Pre-kindergarten and kindergarten, no more than 2.5 hours of instruction per day onsite. So when you see the schedule just momentarily, you'll understand exactly what that breaks down to and what that looks, that will look like in our new normal. And these weren't items that we created on a whim. We received guidance as relates to those indicators. We're going to set up the schedule. After we do the schedule, we're going to walk into, we're going to walk the community into the health and safety. But just before we move on, you can But just before we move on, you can see the screen. This is what a socially-distanced classroom would look like, this is at Orange High School. So thank you, Mr. Belton and his team, for being forerunners in this work. And again, you may not see the partitions on the desks because they weren't in at that particular time, but we just wanted to see a look, have a looksee of what this socially-distanced classroom would look like as relates to the particular number of students in the distancing that were mandated by the NJDOE in the roadback documents. So this time, we're gonna share with you what the schedule looks like, and then we're gonna circle back to the health and safety of our school building. Okay.
Okay, perfect. Alrighty, so before we actually delve into the schedule, I just wanna help you to see what you'll be looking at and the thinking and the reasoning behind the development of the schedule in this way. So for one, Dr. Fitz, you mentioned the idea of the two options for the families. So in terms of this schedule, this schedule speaks specifically to those students who are back in school under the vert, I'm sorry, under the hybrid model.
Right.
Okay? So again, if you look at the top, it speaks to Plan A, Phases Two, Three, and Four. Plan B, Phases Three and Four. So those are the phases where we're introducing the soft launch in both of the plans, as well as when we're bringing the students back on-site full-time. Why did we do the schedule this way? Because we have to make sure that we're maintaining a, a max of twenty-five percent of the students in the buildings on any given day. So we're trying to limit, and again, based on state guidance, the percentage of students who are in the building at any given time to twenty-five. So that twenty-five percent is another means of us helping to keep our staff and students safe. So a reduced number of students, that also means a reduced number of classroom use, classrooms used, that's also a reduced number of contact hours between staff and students, as well as students and students. So that's, that's the thinking for that. Within this schedule, we're also looking at the fact that our teachers, they are not on-site more than two days per week. Our teachers will be staggered across the, the days of the week where we have full coverage, but at the same time, we're still trying to make sure that we're tending to the safety and security of our staff as well. The ratio of ten-to-one is also played out here. So you're gonna see where we're grouping students into cohorts so that we can maintain a ten-to-one ratio. What does that mean? For everyone, teacher, they're, they're in a classroom with no more than ten students at one time. The six feet of social distancing space is also played out within the schedule. So again, we're reducing the number of students in a class at any given time to make sure that we can maintain the six feet of space. The last two pieces that you'll note within the schedule. Our students in grades one through twelve, they are, by state, they're required to do a minimum of four hours of instruction per day. Our students in, in pre-K and kindergarten, we have them doing two and a half hours of instruction per day. So the, again, these are state standards, state minimums with regards to the time that our students are, are in school with us. So with that said, let's go into the schedule itself. Group One, if you look to the far left, Group One represents our students who have greater needs. We're looking specifically within this section as, at our students with disabilities. We're looking at our bilingual populations of students, students that we've identified as Tier Three. So those are students who need additional academic supports. And then finally, the remote list group of students, those were students who didn't engage enough in remote instruction to get the full benefit of those services. So we're trying to give them special treatment. If you look across the, the row at Monday, Tuesday, then Thursday, Friday, you'll note that we're treating these students at least two days per week. So our at-risk students, they get priority, especially starting out. There are students who represent the soft launch, where we're actually returning to the brick and mortar space, and those students are with us two days per week, broken up into groups, also to keep them safe. So when the schools begin their scheduling, they're ensuring that these pre-identified bodies of students are with us for two days per week. If time allows, they can schedule them for additional time. But minimally, these students are getting two days of on-site instruction per week in the hybrid model. If you look at Monday and Tuesday, still looking at Group One specifically, kindergarten, first, second, and third grade, they're reflected in the Monday, Tuesday schedule. If you go to Thursday, Friday, you're looking at our at-risk students in grades four through seven. Okay? So again, the schedule, the, what you would pull from the schedule is the fact that those pre-identified students, they're going to be on-site two days a week, so we can help to try to accelerate their learning. The schools will be providing families with schedules in advance of September eighth, so that families will know exactly what the expectations are for their children based on, based on the school-level schedule. Okay? So you'll get this information. As you will have noticed by this point, Wednesday is that one day out of the week where you won't see any scheduled events. That's because we're using that time mid-week to clean buildings, to prepare classrooms, to disinfect spaces. That also gives our schools a chance to interact with staff and administrators, conducting professional development, giving our teachers time for collaboration in their own self-care and for planning. Our teachers are also setting up office hours during this time. So again, this schedule represents the schedule when students are actually on-site, so that we can stagger to allow no more than twenty-five percent of students on-site at any given time. Alright? If we look at Group Two, Group Two is the schedule for students in grades pre-K and K, specific to our general education students. If you look at the timeframes allotted, it shows that we are still tending to two and a half hours a week of instruction. So for example, if you look at the first line, it shows eight forty-five until eleven fifteen. That would be the timeframe in which those students would be on-site. If they're in the AM group, if they're in PM, they're on-site with us twelve-thirty until three PM. These schedules again allow for students to enter properly, so that they are not gathering. It allows us to stagger the other students' schedules, so that there's not a lot of congestion at the, at the entry points and the exit points. So again, this is the attempt to keep students safe. A question may come up as to what are students during the rest of the week? So if they're not in the actual school on-site, they're still getting quality remote instruction throughout the remainder of the week. So Groups One and Groups Two, those are our two bodies of students that are on-site two days per week, based on their grade level. The rest of the week, these students are still getting instruction, but through remote means. If we look at Grade, Group Three, and we can scroll down a little bit. If we look at Group Three, Group Three speaks to students in Grades One and Two. Those students are on-site on Mondays and Tuesdays for the most part. School schedules, once this, once the principals start developing and outlining final schedules, it'll fully dictate, this is a sample plan, but the idea would be that first and second grade students would be on-site on Mondays and Tuesdays. When we look at Group Four, we're looking at students in Grades Three and Four. In this schedule, you'll notice that Grade Three students come in on Mondays and Tuesdays. Then they're getting their remote instruction on Thursdays and Fridays. Our fourth graders come in on Thursdays and Fridays, and they're getting their remote learning on the earlier days of the week, Monday and Tuesday. So again, I know that there are a lot of moving parts to this schedule, but you'll get a clean schedule for your children when the time comes. Group Five speaks to our students in Grades Five, Six, and Seven. We're concentrating those students on Thursdays and Fridays. Another heavy aspect of consideration is that some of, sometimes your older students do bring the younger students to school. So we're trying to stagger the schedule in a way that allows for that to continue to happen. And finally, Group Six. Group Six is the schedule dedicated to our students across our middle school and high school structures. So students in Grades Eight through Twelve, their schedule is probably the most unique of this whole page. Those students attend school four days out of the, I'm sorry, depending on their group. They attend one day per week, but we stretch them across the four days. So these students are on-site from eight-twenty until three-twenty-five, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, again, depending on their group. If you look at the Group Six hypertext, the little A, B, C, and D at the top, that just simply shows you that we're still dividing these students into four groups, and then they're assigned the day of the week based on their, their, their specific grouping. Okay. Yes.
Okay. And so, community and staff, you may ask, which plan will I recommend to the Board of Education? The plan that I am recommending is Plan B. So I just wanna go through Plan B one more time. We're gonna go through Plan B one more time, so that all of our constituents are aware of what that is. I don't wanna confuse anyone, but what I wanted to do was share what each of the plans look like, so that you were made abreast again. This is on a level of keeping you abreast, right? But now that we have done it such, I think it's important that you're aware that this is the recommendation that I'm going to make, is Plan B.
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three. Okay. This bear with me, this mouse is jumping. Okay.
Perfect, okay. Alrighty, so we'll take our time with this again, just so that you're, you're fully comfortable with what is being articulated within Plan B. So again, in Plan B, the return date for students would be September eighth. Return meaning, this is when.
Let's say it again. So I just wanna intimit again. The plan that I'm recommending for school year 2021 is Plan B. So I'm gonna have Dr. Powell go through Plan B again, so everybody is aware of what those indicators are. So I want you to take a minute. I know people are, are writing questions, things of that nature on Facebook Live. But again, I think it's important that you have the opportunity to read, let the director go through the intricacies of Plan B. In addition, as you know, things do change, as I intimated earlier in the presentation. And when things change, what ends up happening is that we have to monitor and adjust. So if the governor comes out with a new plan, this plan may have to be tweaked just a little bit, and we'll get back online and we'll continue to intimit that information. Now, this is the plan that we're going, going to implement until this time things are changing from the governor's office and/or the NJDOE. So I wanna make that very clear. Plan B is the recommendation from Dr. Fitz, you, okay?
Okay. You're good? Alrighty. So again, students would be re-entering the academic world on September eighth. September eighth through October second, and, and I'm, I'm really gonna slow down and, and take my time with this. September eighth through October second, there, there's a lot happening during that time. We have to recognize that you have a, a bulk of school districts within the state of New Jersey. They're going through the same process as we are. They're attempting to place orders, orders are delayed, supplies are delayed. So that time also allows us to do a number of things. Should the governor change directions, it allows the District of Flexibility to pivot, so that we are able to adjust our schedules as needed. So again, Plan B speaks to four weeks of virtual learning for all staff and students. So for four weeks, September eighth through October second, staff and students are our home, and they are providing either teaching or learning through virtual means. I wanna read through some of the checkmarks to show what's happening during that time. In addition to the instruction, we're able to provide full training to staff, to students, to our administrators, as well as our families. So we're taking our time and making sure that those constituents are apprised of all of the required trainings for COVID-nineteen and these conditions. So we're doing those trainings. We're also conducting trainings for staff, students, parents, administrators on digital platforms as well. So making sure that everyone's comfortable with platforms such as Google Classroom. We're also encouraging our teachers, as well as our instructional leaders throughout the district, to make sure that we're focused on critical prerequisite content. A lot of our students may have lost some instructional groundwork in the, the months prior to the opening of September, so between summer, as well as our remote plan from March through June. So we're making sure that we're covering some of those gaps that may have occurred during that time. We're also making sure that beyond the Chromebooks, that students also have access to print materials. So the materials that they will be using in school with their teachers, we wanna make sure that those students have those same materials at home, so that in addition to the digital environment, the students are also engaging with writing. They're engaging with doing math problems. They're engaging in various facets where they need those print materials at home. Beyond that, we also know that there are physical supplies that students need when they are doing virtual learning in their homes. So we're making sure that we're providing students with safe materials, such as manipulatives that they can use within, within their homes as well. The final piece of that is, we're still giving staff within the schools, the administrators, the opportunity to finalize schedules throughout the course of the year. So schedules are continuing to be refined throughout this time, so that we're, you know, because these are, like I said, a lot of moving parts, so that we're providing the best instructional opportunities as possible. The district also during this time is equipping and making sure that the classrooms are properly outfitted, are properly outfitted with the Plexiglas sneeze guards, with the sanitizing stations, with the PPE that staff and students will need when they return to that virtual space after November twenty-third. So again, making sure that our schools are properly outfitted, so that instruction can be, can be optimized. Okay? So that's what's happening during that October, I'm sorry, September eighth through October second timeframe. Once we get into the next phase of the, of the plan, which is remote synchronous, that's where our teachers are on-site. We're looking for our teachers to come on-site two days per week, and our support staff to be on-site four days per week, in addition to the administrators. So during that time, our teachers are on-site. We have our students still at home. This is running for seven weeks. Our students are at home getting virtual instruction through teachers who are doing live lessons. And the schedule is what's super important to note here. Our teachers are going to be engaging in, in a half-day schedule. This allows the majority of the content that the students would get under a traditional, under traditional settings, they're still getting the full complement of that content. So again, in remote synchronous, teachers are on-site two days per week, based on the schedule created by the administrators. Our support staff are on-site four days per week. And then our students are still in the, in the confines of their home, getting remote synchronous instruction by their, their classroom teachers. Okay? In terms of the afternoons, those are still active times. Once our teachers are on-site, our students are still afforded the opportunity to interact with their teachers in the afternoons. That's when teachers are gonna be conducting their office hours. That's also when teachers are able to make contact with families. And teachers are also able to do their lesson planning, their CPTs in terms of collaborative planning times, as well as providing feedback to, to students and to their families as well. Alright? Give me one second to move the screen. Okay. When we move into, oh, alright, there we go. When we move into, this mouse is sensitive. When we move into Phase Three, which is our soft launch, again, that's where we're bringing back those pre-identified bodies of students. This is, this is the schools, at the schools' discretion with regards to pre-identifying those students who really need to come back a little bit earlier. Those students come back into a brick-and-mortar space. Those students come back into a brick and mortar space. They're with us for about three and a half weeks. And then finally in phase four, that's why we do a lot more of the re-entry of all of our other bodies of students. So by the time we get into January fourth, all of our students are interacting in, uh, a brick and mortar space in a traditional setting. Where they're coming in one to two days per week to interact with their teachers directly throughout the rest of the week. When they're not onsite, they're still getting quality virtual instruction. Okay. Beyond that, I'm going to bring us back to health and safety. And we'll begin those conversations. You'll also note within the plan, there's an FAQ section. And let me just scroll back. There's the FAQ section. Within that FAQ section, it answered, um, a large majority of questions that you had early on. And it actually speaks to, um, the, the plan in whole. So that FAQ is going to be very helpful. In the event that you still have questions after this presentation. All right, we're going to begin health and safety.
And I know that there were some questions about the, um, the cleaning protocols in the district. Mr. James is going to walk through, um, what has been done as a, a district since the closure on March seventeenth. Um, he will then in fact go into some of the, um, work that we're going to be doing throughout the course of the school year to ensure the health and safety of all staff and students.
Uh, thank you, Dr. Fish too, and good afternoon, members of the Orange Community and stakeholders. Uh, in reference to health and safety, as you can see on the screen, we have here, the hand, the first sign you see is a hand washing technique. And then the face masks. In addition to that is the distancing, social distancing. Those are the three major areas and major effects that I believe has been on the news that we have to use or maintain. In order to prevent the COVID nineteen infection. So those are really simple protocols and techniques that we gather use. By so doing, the district's PPE purchases have intensified on providing face masks. To every students and staff, at least two reusable masks will be provided to every staff and students. In addition to that, we have the disposable mask. Just in case a staff or student walks to a building and doesn't have the mask available. Or forgot it at home, or lost it. So we have disposable mask on every day. At the entrance of each school. And administration buildings. These techniques here, which includes a hand washing and distancing. Will have signs in the schools. We already bought a whole lot of signs. And we'll have to mark the floors too, which will be happening in the next week or so, before the end of August. All these school floors and bathrooms will be, uh, signed up. To at least educate our students. And staff. Of what a distancing and the hand washing technique should be. Those are very critical and very important to every one of us. I know we've heard on TV, on radio, on newscasts about the major effects. Or major techniques that will be very effective. In protecting us from this virus. Those are the three areas that we have to concentrate on. In addition to that, uh, classroom buildings, our buildings and the classrooms will be very ventilated. Every classroom that the principals have selected to accommodate our students. Will make sure those rooms are well ventilated. We already started working on them right now to make sure the air conditioning units. And the heating units. Are fixed. The student desk that will be used in the classrooms will be provided with deck shields. There'll be student deshius on every classroom desk that will be used by the students. In terms of workstations, uh, secretaries, our office staffs, our security desk will have this news guard. Will be installed. They've been ordered. We're just waiting for them to get here. From the time we ordered it, they say we'll get there by mid-August for us to install them at every workstation. So that'll be a white, uh, glass shield, but plastic, plastic glass shield that'll be installed around our essential workers. Security guards. CSTs, secretaries, and any workstation that has. To, um, attend to staff, students, or parents. Our security, uh, security guards will be helping us with the temperature monitoring at the front entrance. We have the handheld temperature. Uh, um, thermometers. That'll be provided at every entrance. So anybody coming into the building has to be measured. And anybody over a hundred degrees temperature will not be allowed in. I believe in the plan, you must have been, um, informed as to how that will be done. When it comes to, as soon as it should be a holding area or a holding room where to be directed. So that will be isolated before parents will come and pick up their children. And I believe Dr. Powell was, um, explained that later. If she hasn't done so yet. The teachers will be provided with not only the face mask, they'll be provided with shields. That's a glass, um, PPE shields. Because they have to be well secured too. In addition to the face mask they're going to have. And students will have just a face mask and the best shields. Nurses, uh, essential nurses will be provided with gloves. Dis, disposable health emergency gowns. In addition to face mask and face shields. For the, for them to be able to execute their daily duties. We have, we have understood that our nurses will not be used or not, will not be, uh, participating in the temperature checks in the morning. They are so essential that we have to isolate them in their offices or in their secured area because they are frontline. Staff. Just in case there's an emergency. So we have to make sure the nurses are ready and available to move on any emergencies we have. Signs, like I said earlier, we have the social distancing signs that will be posted in all parts of the building. The hand washing technique signs, the welcome back signs will be posted. And our custodians. Will be provided with high-tech equipments. For daily continuous cleaning and disinfecting of the schools. So on a daily basis, there'll be continuous cleaning and disinfecting of all areas touched, used, sat on. Or surfaces that have been. Uh, or spaces that have been used, just in case we have students who will use a room. Or even staff and then have a rotating movement within the school building. So as soon as one group leaves, custodians will go in, disinfect and wipe as quickly as possible to have the next group. Use the room if that is the case. But based on the schedule, I believe. There'll be a minimal rotation of students from one room to the other. I believe Dr. Powell and Dr. Fishel must have presented that. This, the staff will move, but the students will have minimal, minimal movement within the school buildings. We have ordered disinfectants that are powered equipments that will assist our custodians with quick cleaning and disinfection. We have the backpacks that we already ordered. That can help them clean a large surface area as quickly as possible. We have also been looking into a mass temperature scanning equipment. That can scan a crowd of about twenty to twenty-five. With a face recognition. So that the scanning of students and staff, if there's, if it's a large crowd walking towards a building or within a building. Saying they captured, you have a vast number of people, we can have that equipment scan that whole group in a, in a, in about two or three seconds. And give us a temper, but we're still looking into that machine to see we can have that purchase for every school, although it's expensive, but we're looking into it. We believe in the health and safety of our staff and children, so we're going to look into getting that. But right now, what we have are the handheld thermometers. On Wednesday's days, you know, which is, uh, based on the. Schedule that Dr. Fishel has presented, you have staff and children in the building Monday and Tuesday. On Wednesday will be a major cleaning day in between the two schedules. So not that we're not going to be cleaning every day, there'll be thorough cleaning by the custodians, but Wednesday will be the major cleaning. When we have that break in the middle of the week. We're going to provide hand sanitizers. In every classroom. Just a bottle once so that the teacher in that room can control it. In the hallways, we're going to provide the stations. So that maybe in between two or three classrooms, there'll be another station there. To have a pump. Outside in the hallway for general use, but in the classroom, if need be, the teachers will have a bottle of hand sanitizer. Readily and available. We have also. Made all these purchases and a whole lot of them have started arriving into the district. At the admin office. We received within the last. Week. We have received majority of the items we ordered. But those items that are still pending, we have been told they'll be arriving sometime during the week. This week and into next week. So that ends my presentation and I'll defer back to Dr. Fishel and Dr. Powell. If there's any question coming from the community.
So thank you, Mr. James. I think what's most important is that we have to reiterate the fact that cleaning did occur from March seventeenth into current. Um, in addition, that anytime someone came into the building to pick up a supply or a material. We were equipped with the room number in the flow of traffic to and from that location. And then an intense cleaning was done to ensure the health and safety of all that would be entering into the building. In addition. Cleaning does not just occur on Wednesdays. In fact, it will be occurring every single day. Um, that staff and students are present in the, in the buildings. It's really important that we understand those critical facts holistically. Just two important, um, items, and I want to, again, we're going to go back through Plan B. We're going to talk through the phases, the dates of the phases, so everybody's very clear. We are going to continue having kiosks in our district for Chromebook distribution. I'm going to say that again, we're going to continue having Chromebook kiosks here in our district. We were eight, we were one of the only districts to do it throughout the, uh, weekly throughout the pandemic. And also throughout the course of the summer, during summer instruction. We're not going to let up now. We're going to continue to do it as such. But when you get that phone call, make sure that you, um, you come to the site to pick up your Chromebook with the information that you need. It is important, and I have to, to, um, state that, that is really important, that, you know, we're seeing a lot of drafts, um, a lot of blasts out. We send those out because we want you to be aware of the programs that we have in place from the Chromebook distribution. To, um, any of the food service pieces that we have in place for our students. So again, I want to reiterate, cleaning is happening every day, all right? In Orange Township Public School District. In addition. Have a Chromebook kiosks weekly as we did throughout the course of the first half of the pandemic. This will not change. And again, I want to thank, um, the staff that were part of, um, ensuring that we had those kiosks every single week at Lincoln Avenue School. During my superintendent's reports throughout the course of March through, um, July, we spoke about the Chromebook kiosks. And I reminded folks about, um, the fact that we were having these kiosks. We are not going to stop. We're continuing having Chromebook kiosks. In addition, I met with food services with the, um, with a team of folks here in the district. And we are continuing the grab and go breakfast and lunch program. Again, we know the locations, but I'm going to share them again. At O E C C located at three ninety-seven Park Avenue, and O E C C stands for Orange Early Childhood Center. Scholars Academy, Forest Street School, Haywood Avenue School, Lincoln Avenue School. Oakwood Avenue School, Park Avenue School, and Rosa Parks Community School. Now be reminded, like we said, from, um, the end of March to current, children go to any site to pick up their breakfast and lunch. Grab and go. It's important to know that. And we are beginning this on day one. Not on day two, not on day three, not on day four, on day one, which is September eighth, twenty twenty. At this time, what I think we need to do, we've listened to the, the facilities updates, what we have supplied as a district. But I think what is most important is that we go through Plan B. So I'm going to, um, bring us back to, um, page thirty-two. And we're going to walk through the timeline so everybody is clear regarding the expectations. And I know. That one of the most important pieces is that there are questions about, well, how can students keep their masks on every day? That is a critical question, right? And so I know whether children, as I presented before, on the bus, or if they are, um, in the school building. We have to, uh, prepare our students for this, this entity, right? We have to. But with Plan B, it gives us a little more time to do as such. Which is why we're going to begin virtual and we're making our way to brick and mortar. Okay, so I just want to go to page thirty-two. And we're going to do this, we're going to go in a. We're going to move in a very, um. Slow direction because I just want to make sure that everybody understands what Plan B stands for and what it has in it. To ensure the continued health and safety of all staff and students.
Okay, thank you. All right. So again, uh, I want to reiterate the fact that, um. And we get a scroll so we could see just the times. Perfect. Okay.
Okay.
Um, Plan A is not the recommended choice at this point in time. We're looking at Plan B being the selection that this district will follow with regards to, uh, um, virtual instruction. So with that said, um. For parents who have made the decision that they want their child to go back into school in a hybrid setting, right? So again, parents have two options. Option A, option one, parents are able to keep their students in virtual learning for the course of the entire school year. So that's the first option. That was announced about a week or so ago by our Governor Murphy, right? That's, that's, that's one option that parents have. The other option that parents have within Orange is that they can send their child back, but in a hybrid way. Hybrid just simply means a blend of both, uh, virtual instruction combined with students going into the school building and being onsite. So Plan B. So Plan B just simply speaks to those parents who have elected for their child to return in a virtual learning slash hybrid setting. Where they're doing the combination of virtual as well as being on site, alright? So again, parents who have opted for their child to get a hundred percent virtual. That means all of their instruction takes place at home. The, the, for those parents who have elected for their students to do the hybrid where we're combining both um, uh, virtual as well as being on site, that's what this Plan B speaks to, okay? So regardless, we're looking in phase one at one hundred percent virtual instruction. That means that during September eighth through October twelve. All of our students will be engaged in virtual learning regardless of the option that the parent has elected. All of our students are going to be in virtual learning, so at home. Learning through digital means as well as what other print materials we supply. The teachers are also teaching from home and we're able to provide that virtual experience to all of our, our students from September eighth through October second, okay? So I'm going to pause a little bit, let that breathe, alright? So four weeks, so when we start the school year as a district, the recommendation is that we start in this way. We start with virtual. Again, I mentioned the idea of us being able to pivot. That means that let's say the state comes out and tells us, you know what, we have to do virtual for the entirety of the first semester. We still, we're in a good place because we've properly planned to at least start in a virtual space. So this plan allows us again to enter back into a virtual world and to stay there for at least four weeks unless we're directed to do something differently, okay? In phase two, right? Phase two picks up where phase one ended, so October fifth through November twenty-fifth. Students are still at home. This is all students regardless of age, grade level, school. All students are still at home. The teachers are reporting in on site. These are the classroom teachers, they're interacting with, with students. Again, they're based on a schedule. Our teachers, when they report on site, they're providing a half-day schedule of instruction to our students. So the students are home, the teachers are on site. And the teachers are providing a half-day instruct, of a, a half-day of instruction to our students, direct synchronous instruction. So October fifth through November twenty-fifth. The teachers come in, the students are still at home, alright? So we look at phase one into phase two, the students are still at home, okay? What are the students doing in both environments? They're interacting with their teachers. The main difference between phases one and two is what the teachers are doing. In phase one, the teachers are able to provide remote instruction from the teachers' own homes. And phase two, the teachers are coming on site so they have better access to all of their materials and their supplies for teaching. Alright, we're looking at supports from our staff such as technology coordinators. Technology coordinators will be on site four days per week because they're also providing technical support. Who are some of the other people coming in four days a week? We're also looking at our child study team members, our nurses. These are staff who provide supports and have to provide support to students across the board. And related services as well, that's important to note, okay? So phases one and two combined, they keep the students at home while the teachers are coming on site in phase two to provide direct instruction. Phase three, phase three begins November thirtieth and runs through December twenty-third. What's happening there? There's a select group of students and this is what the schools will identify and they'll notify the parents of such. This select group of students may represent district-wide about ten percent of the students. These are the students who have greater needs that we're bringing in a little earlier so they can get face-to-face instruction. These students will be coming in on site two days per week beginning November thirtieth. What's happening with the other students? They're still engaging in virtual learning formats being continued from phase two. So this select body of students starts to come back in, they get three and a half weeks of direct instruction with the teachers. When they're not in school with the teachers on their two days, they're home continuing in remote instruction, okay? All of the other students, they're still engaging in virtual instruction as they had done in phases one and two. Finally, when we get into phase four, this is where all of our students, with the exception of those whose parents opted them for strictly virtual. All of our students have the opportunity to return to school one to two days per week. If the, the students are in grades kindergarten or grade pre-K. Or if they're the students that we identified earlier on as students in that group one. Those students are coming on site two days per week. All other students, grades one through twelve, that aren't in those other groups, they come on site one day per week, right? When they're not on site, they're still doing remote instruction if it's not their day. When they are on site, they're getting, getting direct instruction with their teachers based on the schedule that we provided earlier. So again, we recognize this is, this is a lot to take in, especially hearing it for the first time. The plan will be posted as, as soon as we get full approvals. And beyond that, we, we're just emphasizing that we decided to slow down the reentry process so that we can make sure that we are keeping our staff and our students as safe as possible, okay? Do you want to add to? Alright, so, so we can take a moment in terms, in terms of that safety piece. Mr. James articulated the pieces with regards to facilities. I want to go back to page nineteen.
Nineteen.
Eighteen, eighteen and nineteen, yeah. As a matter of fact. Okay, what page is that? That's nineteen, okay. That's fine, that's fine.
Okay.
So, so in terms of, of keeping children safe, we've thought through a lot of different aspects. Mr. James covered a large majority of them. We're again, making sure that entrances and exits are carefully marked. So that there, there's no gathering or commingling of students and families. So that's, that's one thing that we're definitely paying attention to, if we can go to page twenty. Alright, this page speaks to how we're tending to desk arrangements within the classroom. So when our students do return to, to face-to-face instruction. We're adhering to social distancing requirements, keeping our students six, six feet apart from all other students. We're also making sure that we position the desks properly. So that students are never facing each other, whether it's a desk or a table. But they're always six feet apart and they're always facing one direction in the classroom. We're also providing labeling within the classrooms and outside of the classrooms. So that students are given direction and guidance as to stay within that six feet of, outside of the six feet of distance so that they're staying safe. Alright, if we could just skip to page twenty, um. Let's say page, page twenty-two. Mr. James spoke earlier about the sneeze guards. He also spoke about the, the masks and the physical barriers in select spaces. So again, we're still making sure that that happens. Just to dip into what happens in special classrooms, you have classrooms such as the music room. We're making sure that we're adhering to the six feet of distance. We're also providing additional PPE supports in those classrooms, given the fact that in instrumental classrooms and chorus classes, there exists the opportunity for even more germs to be spread just by nature of those classes. So we're putting additional PPE supports within those classrooms as well. If we go to page twenty-three. This is the part where a lot of parents and as well as staff had questions with regards to masks for students. So the expectation, and Dr. Fitz, you spoke to it earlier. The expectation is that we start training our students now as to how to maintain and keep their masks on for longer periods of time, okay? This is just something that, that they have to do. If you look at the very first line of this page, this is the mandate that was issued by Governor Murphy just last week. His expectation is that students wear their face masks or their face coverings for the full extent of the day. The exceptions are for students who are under the age of two. Students who have physical constraints where they can't keep a mask on for the whole day. Of course, if they're in water, they're not going to be wearing masks. If there's any respiratory issues, asthma included, the expectation is that they don't wear masks. Masks are the preferred choice for keeping students safe, but any event such as students who have asthma. They will have to wear a face shield in place of the mask and still adhere to the social distancing of six feet. So again, the expectation is that students wear masks. It is of course in the best interest that students come to school with, with multiple masks. In the event that their mask throughout the day either gets soiled or wet, where it becomes relatively unusable. So then the students, the students will have a change of a mask. If a student needs a mask, the school will be able to accommodate and provide the student with that particular mask. In cases of students who are younger, who need assistance with masks. There will be staff that can help the student to make sure that they're staying safe throughout, throughout the course of the day. So mask is a, is a, one of the hot topics within the FAQs. So you'll see once we get to the FAQs, a large number of the questions that you had around the wearing of the mask. They were answered within that FAQ section, just so that you, you understand all of the parameters around the wearing of the masks. And then finally, just the last little part on this page, and we scrolled down to the bottom of this page. It just speaks to that student-to-teacher ratio. So again, we're just making sure that students and staff are safe and so we're minimizing class sizes. So if classrooms accommodate ten students, then we will have ten students in a class at one time socially distanced. And with one teacher. Beyond that, if a classroom cannot accommodate ten students with social distancing, that classroom will not be used. We're only using classrooms that can accommodate proper ratios so that we can keep our staff and our students safe. Okay? The last little part of this, if we flip to page twenty-six. And this is before we go into the, the nurses piece. So on page twenty-six, it's important to note that again, there will be temperature checks when students enter. There's the, the definite possibility that students are going to enter from different parts of the building. So again, we're alleviating the possibility of congregating. In terms of other visitors entering the building, unless we're designating people as essential, essential visitors, so that includes healthcare workers, district personnel. We're greatly limiting those people that enter the building because we're trying to keep everyone safe. So the fewer members that are in a building at any given time. That gives us a better opportunity to do any kind of contact tracing, contact tracing that may have to occur. In the event that someone either shows signs or is proven to have COVID nineteen. So again, visitors are going to be limited. As parents, when you are dropping your children off or picking them up. The expectation remains that we're expecting that, that parents, visitors, community members, they're still adhering to those six feet of social distancing. Okay, nurses office. Alright, so next page, alright. We, we are considering our nurses frontline support. And, and that is, that is something that we have to take seriously. Our nurses, they are the onsite care for, for our students and helping to keep everyone safe. So something else that the district is doing. In the event that a student or a staff member shows signs or symptoms of COVID or anything related. Those students or staff members will be isolated. So part of the nurses responsibilities is to tend to those people who may be showing signs and symptoms and keeping them, keeping them safe. But also keeping the rest of the, the staff and students safe as well. So we're looking at identifying isolation rooms for any staff member student who shows symptoms. So that students who have just your routine bumps and bruises, they're never interacting in that type of a space. So there's going to be a separate space just for your day-to-day typical cuts and scrapes that students get versus an isolation space for students who may, or staff who may be showing signs of of, of COVID or may even have, have COVID. So we're just making sure that that's, that's safe for, for our students as well. The last piece about the, the health aspect will go to the contingency plan. And this contingency plan addresses what happens if a student or staff shows signs of COVID. Or what happens if a student or staff member is actually shown to have COVID. So if we can flip to page. I forget where it is, okay. We're going to the contingency plan, which begins on page, I forget. So needless, fifty-four, so. So here we go. Alrighty, sorry about that.
Yep. Okay. Alright, so the contingency planning. I just want to walk through this piece with you. Confirmed person with COVID nineteen in a school building, one, we assess the risk. Students and staff must be safely and respectfully isolated from others and cannot return to campus until the school system's reentry criteria are met. Institute is short building dismissal for cleaning, disinfecting, contact tracing in consultation with local health official, potential two to five days of closure. Now, you may ask about the cohort of students and why would they remain together? This is going to allow for less exposure to other folks. If in fact, students did get infected from that particular cohort with coronavirus. So it's really important to lessen the, if you will, to lessen the amount of folks that students are around. And in fact, or staff members around and then have a lessening effect so that students and staff are not going to have an opening with so many folks around them. Well, what happens when there's a, a case that is discovered? Well, the school-level administrator, the principal will contact me. And what do I do? I apprise the Board of Education and the Board Attorney and I talked to him about my action steps. Because I have to make sure that everybody's aware of what is going on here in the district. To continue. We contact the local health official in Orange Township. To communicate dismissal decisions and possible COVID nineteen exposure to staff and families to initiate contact tracing, to determine when staff and students should return to school. But also identify folks who have been in contact with that person within a certain amount of time. Contact facilities. You heard Mr. James speak about holistically about the importance of ensuring that we have clean facilities that we're going back and forth to do heavy lifting with, with the correct cleaning agents. Well, we're going to have to close off certain areas, right? Open windows. Doors and clean appropriately. And we're doing intensified cleaning. Not to say that the nights that the students leave that is not intensified, but certainly we're doing intensified cleaning. Particularly in those areas that had been identified as ones that came into impact with COVID nineteen. In addition, determine continuity of services with executive staff, which are my directors, my business administrator and building administrators, principals, deans of students, vice principals. We're looking at mail distribution, instructional supports. We're looking at mail distribution, instructional supports. And for that, I just wanted to share one thing with instructional supports. Throughout the course of this school year, we spoke a lot about Comcast giving us support as relates to Wi-Fi connections and internet connection. They're gonna continue this service through Internet Essentials. I was emailing every day and throughout the course of the summer for those um students who attended summer school and they worked through a synchronous approach. You saw, there, people were emailing me and said, the principal, the summer school administrator said, oh, this particular family needs some support. And what do we do? We contacted Comcast, and within a day or two, they were able to have their connection. So just keep in mind that if you need internet connections or Wi-Fi connections and you don't understand the protocol, I know it's on the website, but just email me at reopeningofschools, one word, at orange.k twelve dot NJ dot US, and I will walk you through exactly what you need to do to get that support. Because we're gonna help you out um from the beginning to the end of this crisis. Social, emotional, as well as related services supports. So determining continuity services when, in fact, the students have to leave the building based on the fact, and the staff, based on the fact that there was a reported case. So we have to make sure that we still have mail distribution, which I just shared with you. We have eight sites beginning on September eighth. Okay, and we wanna continue having those sites um as well, because those sites are gonna help us provide um healthy eating for our students here in Orange Township. So just to share with you again, um those particular sites. Early Childhood Center. Scholars Academy. Street School. As well, because those sites are gonna help us provide um healthy. Okay. Haywood Avenue School, Lincoln Avenue School, Oakwood Avenue School, Park Avenue School, and Rosa Park School. These are the same locations that we have, we had, I'm sorry, from March um twenty-ninth through June twenty-fourth. Remember, in the beginning of the pandemic, we had all the sites open, but we did a needs assessment and saw that the uh students weren't really coming to four other sites. So we condensed and we put all of those sites that just named in one particular location. It is really important that you understand that we're continuing internet supports as well as Wi-Fi supports, as well as the breakfast grab and go. Regardless if you select remote and if when we come back to brick and mortar with a staggered schedule, regardless, you will have that option. I do want to um you to keep in mind that when we send you the schedules, you will see the breakfast time that is gonna be intimated in the schedules, whilst the lunchtime is made in the schedules. The time that Dr. Powell went through on the presentation is the time, the times for instruction, which shows the four hours for grades one through twelve, or it shows the two hour, two point five hours for grades pre-kindergarten and grade kindergarten. We're going to share, just in addition, before I hand it back over to Dr. Powell, um just keep in mind that we're gonna continue to update the school community through our social media handles as well as our district website. It's important that you're in the know, as we wanna get this information four weeks before the start. It's important because you have to make plans um as well. In addition, we are going to have on the website, um as well as a message on our social media handles, the registration to opt for remote learning for the entire school year. I did see some of the questions that were in the um Facebook chat, but in addition, I saw some that were emailed to me that I was trying to um answer as we were going through the presentation. We do like to get right back to folks as soon as possible. So that was our goal, was to get back to everybody as as quickly and expeditiously as possible. Dr. Powell.
Alrighty, so just just flipping to the next aspects of. Alright, flipping to the next aspects of um of the contingency plan. So we'll go to symptomology, page fifty-six. Alright, perfect. In terms of symptom symptomology, it's important to note um that we're, we have to again, train ourselves so that we're recognizing those symptoms. And and this is something that's also beneficial to parents, um so that you know what to look for before before you send your your child to school. Um, so in terms of symptoms, we're looking at a fever of one hundred degrees or greater, a cough, shortness of breath or difficulty breathing, chills, repeated shaking with chills, muscle pain, headache, sore throat, a new loss of taste or smell, fatigue, congestion or runny nose, nausea or vomiting, diarrhea. So those are the primary symptoms of COVID beyond just the fever. So in the event that a child is at school and they show um any of those specific signs, there's a process that's in place. All of the schools have established a pandemic response team. Those members are uh responsible for assisting in beyond the identification on um uh of an illness. They're also looking at how we treat that um going forward. So with that said, um if a student shows symptoms, they're safely isolated from other students. Again, we're making sure that we're respectfully doing so. Um, we're also placing that student in that isolation space that we described earlier. Um, the students are remaining in isolation until they're, and they're supervised during that time, until an adult, an authorized adult is actually picking them up. Until that adult picks them up, again, in terms of the monitoring, we're still, we're still monitoring symptoms. And then finally, once the student is taken off-site, then we go into all of our protocols for making sure that um the spaces that the child interacted are disinfected. In the event that a student or staff member actually tests positive, we're looking at a number of steps that speak to that as well. Um, if we could just scroll down a little bit. So if a student or staff member tests positive, right, we go right into a a plan of action so that that student has to um be away from the school um and and being treated for a minimum of ten days, okay? The student is not going to be allowed back on site until those symptoms have subsided. Um, so ten days plus making sure that those symptoms are have fully subsided. And it's been a minimum of three days since the child has recovered without any signs of of symptoms such as fever. Um, and the same applies to a staff member. In the event that students are exposed to a student who has um COVID, there's another play plan that goes into play then. So if a if a number of students are exposed to a student who has COVID, has been found to have COVID, those students and staff automatically go into self-quarantine, and that's a minimum of fourteen days. So what does contact or exposure mean? If other students at some point in time were six feet away from a student who has who has contracted COVID and for a minimum of ten minutes, then those students would have to go immediately into self-quarantine. That's when the superintendent, district administration, administrator, school administrators, local health authorities, they start making solid decisions about keeping the rest of the student body sound and safe. So that's when they have to make advisement about how they'll handle that situation, whether they have to close the classroom, uh perhaps close the school. Again, that depends on the guidance directly from our local health agency, okay? So that last line on this page where it says returning to a fully virtual environment, those are large decisions, but we definitely are gonna be erring on the side of the students and their safety. So um those are contingency plans that are based on the conversations with the local health authority, okay? So we can go to the next page, which speaks to transportation. Okay, so during this time, um and and yeah, so during this time, we do have programs um that are running where students rely on transportation. So for example, um the Scholars Academy, um that's a program for our students who are um uh in the gifted and talented program as previously identified. In those situations where it's programming that that we provide, that is um that requires busing and what have you, um we will operate those programs virtually. The reason for that is we try to um limit the amount of students entering and exiting the building. So a program such as Scholars, like that's a, that's a definite case, where Scholars will operate remotely. Uh, where the teachers are providing instruction um to students who are off-site, that will be the plan of address for the Scholars Program. In terms of general transportation, our buses still have to adhere to social distancing. Um, and they're actually held to a more strict standard because of the nature of a bus being so enclosed. So with that said, uh bus drivers have to limit the number of students who are on a bus, given the size. Um, seats have to be spaced accordingly. Um, the only time that students may be able to uh sit together or sit closely is if they're coming from the same household and their siblings. But beyond that, it's the um uh mandate of of bus attendance to make sure that students are still um distanced. What that does is it limits the number of students who can be on a bus at any given time, which means that in those events, we definitely have to uh provide greater transportation to make sure that we are adhering to those social distancing rules, okay? And then, if we can just now go to our uh page sixty. Okay, so after-school programming, that's what speaks to the extensions aspect. So again, after-school programming is gonna be contingent upon whether it can properly be provided. If an after-school program can't be safely provided on-site and given all of the the conditions for keeping our students and our staff safe, then we will have it in a virtual space, okay? So so again, regardless of it being a curricular program occurring during a school day or after-school or before-school, as long as we can adhere to um those safety measures, then we can run the program. If not, if we can't afford it and stay safe, then those programs will have to happen virtually, um if if at all, alright? And then finally, let's flip to FAQs beginning on page sixty-one and forward. Okay. So again, once um the plan is posted, you'll see, and this is roughly ten or fifteen pages of FAQs. So um in the FAQ section, there are questions, or there were questions that were posed about a plan itself. So those questions were addressed in um in that first part of the the FAQs. Um, there were questions posed about the virtual option. Those questions were answered. Um, parents also had questions about um facilities and sanitizing and budgets for school districts. All of those questions were answered. Um, there were a number of questions about classroom spaces and partitioning. Those questions are answered. So again, we we took the time to ensure that your questions were addressed throughout the plan. So even in this conversation, um once the plan pulls, a lot of your questions are likely to be answered just again, within within the body of the plan itself. Um, there were questions about students who refuse to wear masks, um students in terms of drop-off and pickup, questions about um high-risk students and staff. And in those cases, again, those questions were were answered. Um, a number of staff also had questions about, you know, what if the staff member themselves is a high, is in a high-risk category, meaning that they already have um conditions that compromise their health? Uh, and you know, what do they do? So again, we're looking for um our staff to be safe as well. So staff also should be getting um the advisement of of their um of their medical um care providers as well. Students who are also considered high-risk, um or in that high, you know, that high-risk category, the parents again can uh can offer the um the hundred percent virtual option if that makes them feel more comfortable. There were questions about instructional materials. We're making sure that we're also providing, um as we mentioned before, print materials, um manipulatives, as long as they're safe, so that students are able to take um a lot of these items home and fully engage in instruction beyond the digital uh, the digital um avenue, okay? Alright, and then uh parent survey? So let's speak to pre-K. Uh, pre-K begins on page. Okay, so in terms of preschool programming, um this is important to note, a lot of the plan, it it um it does speak to preschool programming as well as all of our uh, all of our students. So but specifics of pre-K, um we also know about um those students maybe uh it may be difficult for those students to keep their mask on throughout the course of the day. So this is why we're encouraging um uh families to start kinda training the children to keep the mask on. Um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna speak specifically to the type of mask. Um, you know, because pre-K students, they they may have a tendency to pull up the mask or what have you. It's it's ideal for the student to wear a mask that actually loops behind the ear so that there's minimal um hand-to-face contact. So face shields are not required for those students, um unless they have some difficulty that prevents them from wearing a mask. But beyond that, we're we're recommending that parents purchase the mask for the students, like I said, that loops behind behind the ear so that they're not tampering with it throughout the course of the day. In terms of uh social distancing, um that still applies. There uh initially was the condition that masks aren't required if we follow social distancing. However, um we are uh required now that students wear masks for the extent of the school day, with the exception of things like lunch or other conditions where the mask is not, is not ideal. Uh, in terms of lunch and eating and things like that, we're looking again at providing prepackaged lunches for students. This again limits uh congregating of students. It also limits the students touching um uh the affects of lunch and breakfast. So students are only interacting with the lunches and the the utensils that they'll be using. Um, in terms of nap time, which is um uh another uh provision for pre-K students, um students are still adhering to social distancing even during nap time of six feet apart. And again, we're making sure that the students are facing a specific direction um so that they're not, they're not impacting other students in in those breathing spaces. Um, in terms of students interacting with um manipulatives as well as toys and blocks and and other things that are used in their instructional programs, we are greatly reducing, if if not just cutting out, students sharing um similar items. So again, we don't wanna our students to be interacting with the same items. So the majority of their materials, as much as possible, are gonna be bagged and specific to what they're using. So again, when our students are on-site, we're still limiting how much interaction that they have with um with with different um tools of play. Um, again, we spoke to just the fact that configurations are going to be similar, um where our pre-K students will be on-site two days per week if the parents opt them into the hybrid model. And um throughout the rest of the time, they'll still interact in a virtual space. And it's also important to note that as best as possible, the district is gonna make sure that we're still tending to standard-aligned instruction, um meeting the developmental needs of students. Um, so that that will not be something that we're gonna compromise at all um with within this new space. More direction and guidance is gonna continue to come from the NJ DOE. Um, as for now, this is some of the initial guidance. But again, this is guidance that um continues to help us keep our our students and our staff safe.
Just um, I'm sorry, Dr. Powell. Just very quickly, um I already told you it's gonna be a long conversation. I already told you it's gonna be a long conversation, so thanks for being with me. For those of us still watching, I really, really, really appreciate it. So there was a question about virtual after school programs. Again, let's say there's a program that can't happen virtually, why not? We can definitely do virtual after school programs. The purpose of the summer program, the way that we designed it, and I saw some of the comments that were sent to me that the families really liked the way that the summer program was initiated. We saw and we learned and there was reflective practice based on what occurred in the beginning of the pandemic in terms of distance learning. We had time to create additional programming for the summer. So that's why you saw a differing component in summer twenty twenty. So this was a, the appetizer, the summer was the appetizer, if you will, to what was going to occur for the upcoming school year. Though I didn't know, though the team didn't know that we weren't gonna, we were gonna select this option. We wanted to make sure that if we had to go out and do another some type of distance learning initiative, that it was going to be something where our teams could really touch the students. And that's why you saw what you saw this particular summer. In terms of evacuation drills, we are still awaiting guidance from the New Jersey Department of Education as it relates to those evacuation drills. So as soon as I get that information, of course, I will update the school community as well as our families, the board of education naturally accordingly. So what I would like to share with you. And I always say that it's important to to share some of the survey results with you. So these FAQs and there were some great questions from the ninth of July, the fifteenth of July, the sixteenth of July. And as promised, we said that we were, we were gonna get this information to you so that you can see them as part of the plan. So what I want to do for the last few minutes that we are together. All of these are FAQs, as everybody knows. These are all FAQs that were answered. That's why it took us some time to get this finished. And if you see within the FAQs, this Dr. Powell estimated, if there was a question that could be answered from the actual plan. We indicated that the pages within the plan. So. Parent survey results. Six hundred and eighty-three parents. Participated in the parent survey. And so I always say when we're sending these things out, you want to make sure that you have your, your phones on. I know that I've been sending via Ms. Perkis a lot of blasts. But always understand there's a purpose as to why we're sending them. We want to give you the most up to date information. So the way we communicate is in a myriad of ways through social media, through our district website, through the blasts. Remind, Dojo, and these are a small faction of how we communicate with our families. But again, I know that when you see six seven seven, four thousand, here we go, and sometimes you don't pick it up. Or you decline the call. I need you not to decline the call during these times. For those that aren't, thank you, thank you, thank you. But for those that are saying, you know, it was a little bit too much, we're being cognate of the time that we're sending things. I do know that parents have said to me that sometimes it's a little too late, so I'm trying to make the cutoff at by eight o'clock or so. Because I think that's late enough, but if there's a pressing issue, I don't want you to find out from anybody but the, the school district. And so the way we do that is giving you that information in a timely fashion. So just so everybody's aware, and I did share with you in the beginning of the presentation that the conversation as it relates to remote learning and the successes and or concerns that would be held. We wanted to capture them in a survey. So this is what parents stated. Out of six hundred and eighty-one respondents, remote learning has had a positive effect on my child's education. Sixty-eight point three percent of six hundred and eighty-one respondents said yes. Thirty-one point seven respondents said no. As we continue. Instruction provided to remote learning is engaging. It is rigorous and aligned with the curriculum. Out of six hundred and seventy-eight respondents, eighty point eight percent said yes. Nineteen point two percent said no. So again, we talk about the engagement, the rigor and the alignment. And so in the beginning, when we started this process, it didn't look at how, it didn't look like it does today with the completion of the summer program. So I can understand when we went through some of the learning pains, where some families felt that it did not. But there were improvements because of your voices throughout the course of the school year. But in addition, those, the voice of the staff also assisted us. We're doing those tweaks. We did the relaunch on April twentieth. To continue, the current remote learning approach has found a way to effectively integrate instructional strategies for students. Seventy-five point seven percent said yes, twenty-four point three percent said no. Again, we have now tweaked the office hour approach. So as we walk back into the, to this virtual space, understand that I want folks to be a part of those office hours, to ask questions. I think during the summer, for those that attended the summer programs, you were able to see that based on the surveys, we were able to tweak the programming. And so because of that, you're seeing a even further synchronous approach to teaching and learning in the school district as well. There is a good balance between synchronous, which is real time teaching and learning, and asynchronous instructional supports. Out of six hundred and seventy-three respondents, seventy-two point one percent said yes. Twenty-seven point nine percent said no. So I do know that there were families that said we need more synchronous approaches to learning. And so we upped that through the summer program and that you will see implemented throughout the course of twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year. The district provided self-care supports for all staff, students and families. Out of six hundred and sixty-nine respondents, seventy-nine point eight percent said yes and twenty point two percent said no. Now I have to speak on this particular piece. Every month, even in the summertime, we have updated the COVID nineteen resource tab. We have indicated on the website, in latest news and announcements, we have the self-care supports master list translated in Spanish as well as in Haitian Creole. And the blasts have gone out and the information has been indicated in our social media outlets. Remind, as well as Class Dojo. I need people to make sure they're hearing our messaging. The self-care comes through our master list, COVID nineteen master list. And it is evident on the website page. The last update was in the end of July. So the team, the trauma informed team that I spoke about since March twenty twenty, they have done a really great job, even in the summer. Updating our families and staff. So I do want to say that the staff has done a really, the staff has done a great job in updating that self-care supports. I want to take you back to the virtual field day, the virtual parties, the virtual school spirit of pride days. This is all part of self-care supports for our staff, students and families. The district provided timely updates to all families. Staff about continuation of distance learning and returning to school. Out of six hundred and eighty-one respondents, ninety-one percent said yes and nine percent said no. So again, just be reminded of our our social media outlets, looking at the website daily. We're doing our, our social media outlets, I have to tell you, all summer, every day, there's at least two to three posts a day on our social media outlets. In addition, our website is changing daily. Okay, and we're sending out the blast as well. So again, please be cognate that we're continuing to do that critical work. Chromebook distribution. And information shared with the community. As my board has been very resilient as related to wanting to know the distribution numbers. Ensuring that we had meetings just about Chromebooks and what we can do to get more Chromebooks out there. And so we have placed, and we were one of the only, and I have to keep saying this, one of the only school districts have continued to do this throughout the summer, having distributions throughout each week during the crises or the pandemic, but also in the summer. So it's important that, again, when you see those flyers, when I send the blast, that you are listening to those messages. But again, out of six hundred and seventy-four respondents, ninety point five percent said they agreed that the district provided kiosk information. And that was shared with the school district and nine point five percent said that was not accurate. To continue, my family has access to adequate internet access to support online learning. At a six hundred and eighty-three respondents, ninety-three point seven percent said yes. And it's six point three percent said no. So again, I have to implore you that we will give you, myself and Mr. Devon, who is our our parent, our community engagement officer. He will work with me, with you, to get you the internet access that you need. So please send us an email at reopening of schools, one word, at orange dot K twelve dot NJ dot US. So my family, my family has adequate technology devices. Examples, iPads, Chromebooks, computers to support online learning. Ninety point seven percent said they do, nine point three percent say they do not. So again, those that said that they do not, I want you to email us and we can get you some support as relates to a Chromebook for the start of the school year. My family has access to supplemental supports provided by the schools such as health and nutrition. Eighty-seven point nine percent said yes, twelve point one percent said no, and that's out of six hundred and seventy-nine respondents. This evening, I had intimated the, the fact that we're going back to doing the kiosks for meals, but we had them all summer long. And so we had that information blasted throughout the course of the pandemic from March seventeenth through current. But in addition, we, and I have to say, we even did it this summer. So please make sure that you are listening to those announcements. Those announcements are very, very, very important. With that being said. I just want to see just very quickly before we wrap up. I just want to make sure that if you will. Your voices are very important. This evening, when Dr. Powell was presenting, I was on my cell phones. I couldn't use, I'm using two computers. I was on my cellphone emailing responses to the reopening of schools, one word, at orange dot K twelve dot NJ dot US. I try to get back to everybody very quickly, or my team tries to get back to everybody quickly. If there's a registration question, again, I copy Ms. Botswood Brown. She's worked all summer to make sure that registration has ran smoothly with the supports of her team. So I have to just remind folks that will we continue to have these conversations throughout the month of August? Yes, we will. If there's gonna be updates with Comcast, that's gonna be the first thing. So I'm sure Ms. Perkis, Mr. Vaughn, hear me right now. We're gonna move Comcast up to the top of the latest news and announcements as we speak. When we move it up and you still have a concern about getting support. I need for you to email me at reopening of schools at orange dot K twelve dot NJ dot US. And I ask that because the quicker I know that you need the support, the faster I can work with Comcast to get you the support that you and your family need. I will need your address when you email me, so I don't have to go searching for it. I need your children's names, their grade levels, their schools, and your phone number and email address. Again, your email address, your home address, your phone number, your first and last name. Your child's names and grade levels, that they're gonna be in September first twenty twenty. That's not the first day of school. That's the first day of school for staff. But the first day of school for students is September eighth, but September one, I'm saying because that's when we're recognizing the start of the school year. Please be reminded that as we continue to get information from the New Jersey Department of Education, we will continue to update all of you. If you have a question at three o'clock in the morning and I don't get to it till six thirty. Don't be alarmed, but I'm gonna get to your question or my team will get to your question accordingly. In closing. All of our students, all of our staff, our community is very important to this work. This was not an easy decision, as you probably know. A lot of sleepless nights, as you've all had. So it's not just about the superintendent having sleepless nights, it's about everybody who has over a thousand folks who had come into the call today. Those who have emailed me who couldn't make it into the call. But I do recognize and understand that this was necessary today. I didn't care how long it took. Because I wanted to make sure that folks felt comfortable with understanding, first of all, telling you about both plans, which we did at the curriculum committee meeting. But in addition, I wanted to share with you what my recommendation is going to be. There's a level of trust that we've established in the last year and some change since I've become superintendent of schools. And I will say that I do appreciate the emails and the commentary from every person that comes my way. There is no I N T. There's a collaborative effort to ensure that all of us are going to give our students a sound education, but also ensuring that all students and staff are safe. I talk about self-care all the time. I talk about the health and safety all the time and I mean it. So is this the last conversation that's gonna be live streamed? The answer to that is going to be no. Will we continue to give you updates? Absolutely. As they come in, you will be made aware. So in closing, I just ask that you continue to trust myself, trust the board of education. We work collaboratively together to ensure the health and safety of all here in Orange Township Public School District to the staff. I know several of you have been emailing and calling and, and asking great questions. I know you're supposed to be on vacation. But I want to commend you because you have not used your vacation. Instead, you are asking great questions, jumping in on calls and giving your feedback. And to that end, I want to say thank you. The team wants to say thank you because without each of you, none of this is possible. With that being said, I bear, I wish all of you a great evening and plan to hear from me very soon and my team very soon as it relates to updates that are going to end up happening, as we all know. To the plan as well as any additional items that are going to relate to the opening of school. Thank you very much. Have a great evening. Good night, everybody.